Good evening. It is Monday, April 19th, 2021. It is 6:30 PM. This is the Carney Board of Alderman Meeting. We'll call a meeting order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Surely have you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody is present. You have a call.
We'll go on to the first order of business this evening to accept the certified election results.
Mr. Mayor, enclosed in 1A of the agenda packet is the Clay County Board of Election Commissioners Certified Election Results for the election held on April 6th, and the results are as follows. Alderman Ward 1, two-year term, Kathy Barber, 258; Gabriel Kofelt, 39; Jason Verret, 115; write-in others, 3. Alderman Ward 2, two-year term, Dan Holt, 265; write-in, 17. The question on use tax, yes, 254; no, 506. Motion to accept the certified election results as recommended for the record.
Board, do we entertain a motion to accept the certified election results as read?
I make a motion to accept the results as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move on to the next item, which is the oath of office to Alderman Barber and Alderman Holt.
And could I get you guys, you don't have to rise maybe, but if you raise your hands, and do you solemnly swear to possess all the qualifications of office of Board of Alderman as prescribed by law that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of this class, and the ordinances of the City of Carney, Missouri, and faithfully demeaning yourself in office or help you God?
I do.
Thank you very much, and congratulations if you'll sign this, and the attorney will keep that on record as you being receiving the oath of office.
Congratulations Kathy, and congratulations Dave.
Thank you.
Look forward to continuing to work. Much love to you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item of business, elect a board president.
Mr. Mayor, as provided by Missouri statutes, the board shall elect one of their own members who shall be styled Acting President of the Board of Aldermen and who shall serve for a term of one year. Alderman Holt is the current board president. The floor should be open for nominations. After nominations are completed, the mayor should call for a vote on the candidate.
At this time, we, I will open the floor for the board to nominate a board president.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate to stay on as board president.
I hear Dan Holt nominating himself. Do we have any other nominations on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, I will nominate Jerry Spencer.
Correct. We have Jerry Spencer nominated. Any other nominations from the board? See no other nominations move. Nominate the close of floor. All those in favor of Dan Holt, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Jerry Spencer, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, that gives two for Dan Holt and two for Jerry Spencer. At this time, I would like to table our board president election to a future meeting until a time that the board can, give the board some opportunity to have a discussion with both of the candidates, and that would give me time to have discussion with the candidates as well. So, in the interim, I believe, Mr. Administrators, I mean Dan Holt remains board president until we bring it back up to the board.
The statute is broadened that any, a person that holds the office waits, shall serve until his successor is selected.
Okay. Board President is tabled for the time being. We'll move on to the next item of business.
Mr. Mayor, as provided by Missouri statutes and ordinance, a member of the council, selected by the council, may serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Alderman Barber is the current P&amp;Z representative. Again, the mayor opens the floor for nominations. After nominations are completed, the mayor should call for a vote on the candidate. No motions are necessarily necessary. That's there here. You just open the floor for nomination.
I nominate Kathy Barber for planning zone.
Aye.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? See no other movement. Nominating floor is closed. All those in favor, Kathy Barber?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations Kathy. I appreciate your service on planning and zoning. Next item of business is I would ask the board to approve my recommendation to reappoint Jerry Spencer as a Carney Chamber of Commerce Board Liaison. The Chamber of Commerce bylaws provide a city liaison to represent to serve on the Board of Directors. I do recommend Alderman Spencer to continue being that liaison. As a matter of fact, she is the board president of the chamber as well. Will we do that by simple motion?
Some.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move on to nomination of Park Ward Representative. Provided by ordinance, have the authority to appoint all Park Ward members. The city ordinance provides for liaison for the park, for the Board of Aldermen to serve on the Park Ward. Currently, Alderman Holt serves in that position, and I would recommend that he is reappointed to that position. Can we entertain a motion to approve my reappointment of Alderman Holt to the Park Ward?
Some.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to the next item of business, the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda this evening? There are no questions or discussion. Can we entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Move on to Mayor's remarks. The only item of discussion I have this evening is to announce and give a little update on the I-35 interchange bid letting. That bid letting was moved to fall, and it will not substantially affect the project completion timeline. At our special meeting last week on April 14th, the board agreed to request MoDOT to move bid letting for I-35 interchange to the fall. This was necessary due to unanticipated potentially budget busting valuations on right of ways being purchased by MoDOT or private property owners. While the state is capped at $10 million committed, the city must assume all additional cost overruns. There have been many unanticipated cost overruns, too many, so much that it will now threatens to exceed the city's $24 million bond authorization for a project. Who would have thought that $34 million wouldn't cover cost overruns of building interchange? And that leaves no money for supporting local road infrastructure. We have applied for $5.5 billion of additional funding through Congressman Sam Graves' office. We will also be evaluating other funding options depending on all, on the final right-of-way costs. No one should doubt our ability to resolve and get this interchange built, and we will continue to work with MoDOT to seek its completion. The good news is the fall bid letting should not significantly affect the project timeline for the interchange to be opened to traffic, which is still projected for the summer of 2023. So some small road bumps in the project, but nonetheless, as I mentioned, we will figure it out, and we'll continue to push that project forward. That concludes my mayor's remarks, and we'll move on to the administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for supporting the task order with Lampry Neerson for the salt storage dome. We want to keep that moving along so we can actually have this, something underway, hopefully before our next winter season. And so I appreciate that very much. I was showing a picture here early, earlier about our water line progress, and I think I can get it up on the screen and just simply show you guys that we are in the midst of finding valves that we've long known were there but could not simply locate, and this happens to be one that was well under even the chip and seals, looks to me like. Maybe the day they built it, they buried it. So, you know, it's good to see it, and it's good to understand that we do have, our plans are okay, but we're still, we're still uncovering things like this, aren't we, Donnie?
Yep, but all our new valves are GPS, so it won't happen anymore. Face of wire is in place. We will be able to find them from here on out.
Good.
At least on that lot. At least on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my report.
I will send you public requests and petitions. Looks like we have three items to discuss this evening.
Mr. Mayor, Travis Cedric is here tonight representing K and R Wholesale. Cedric Construction proposes to construct a 6,400 square foot accessory building addition on Lot 23, renovation at 990 Premier Drive. Commercial site plan approval is required for additions of 5,000 square feet in area. At their April the 12th meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval subject to meeting all staff comments. Those minutes are enclosed as well as the staff report. David Pavlich is online. I don't know how well he is because he's still turned off his, his mic and his, he's turning his mic on, so maybe he might have something to say other than cough at us because he went home sick today.
I might cough at you.
Not too bad. Anyway, the commercial site plans may be approved by motion to the board.
Thank you. Any additional comments from Pavlich for planning and zoning?
Just that this site plan complies with our code requirements. It's required because they're proposing a building that's over 5,000 square feet. They did get approval from the Board of Trustees for Innovation Business Park, which is a requirement as well.
Alderman Barber, do you have anything to add to that?
Just past planning and zoning with very little conversation, so we're all excited to see local businesses grow.
Any questions from the board?
I do have a question. May I address?
Yes, absolutely.
Travis?
Yes.
Can you explain to me why we have no lighting for our parking lot or outside on this building?
There are light packs, but they're not shown on the drawing. But there will be some on the building. I don't have any additional parking lighting anywhere, but we will have some lots have shown today.
Okay, so there will be some on, okay.
Yeah.
Also Alderman Holt, I don't, I don't believe that they're open late at night either, so the only lighting that really they might consider would be security type of lighting.
Well, that's what I was concerned about, with security.
Are there any other questions from the board? If that, is read, sorry, this is a, requires a motion, a simple motion by the board. Can we entertain a motion to approve the Lot 23 building expansion site approval?
I make a motion to approve site expansion proposal.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Go on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, Ron Cowherd is online with us, representing his clients for the Estates of Merrimack Second Flat. This is a reapproval of the final flat of Merrimack Second Flat consisting of 12 single-family lots, originally approved in 2018. At their April the 12th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval subject to meeting all staff comments. Again, minutes are enclosed, and the staff report is enclosed in the agenda packet as a proposed ordinance approving the plat as recommended. And David, do you have any more reporting?
I would just like to point out that this is a reapproval of a previously approved plat. There have been no changes made to the plat, and the engineering plans have been approved by the city engineer, so this plat's ready to be moved forward through the board for the process.
Alderman Barber, do you have anything else to mention for planning and zoning?
No, for this one, no.
Right. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Cowherd?
What's the, looks like there's two lots on the very end of the cul-de-sac that are heavily treed. Are those detention or those?
There's a creek down, cuts off down that creek.
Right. Are those detention or are those buildable lots?
Councilman Lehman, Ron Cowherd, AGC Engineers, 405 South Leonard Liberty, Missouri, here on behalf of Merrimack Development LLC. Lot 47 and 46 will be buildable lots. They are extra deep. They're 240 foot deep. We would anticipate that those houses would get built closer up to the right of way. But, but those are, those are buildable lots. They do have a slope from, from west to east.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the board? If not, if we could read the proposed ordinance, first reading please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Estates of Merrimack Second Flat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading by Todd Olley, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Estates of Merrimack Second Flat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
Move to approve on second reading.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pull the board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
The votes unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will move on to the next item.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the, the next, I was just seeing if Bob Parks was on, but I don't think he is.
Yeah, Jim, I don't see Bob online either.
Bob Parks is representing Noah's Landing, or staff will recommend, it's, it's actually a reapproval of the first plat. It also inspired in 2018, or from 2018. It consists of 30 single-family lots on the land, generally known as the Hap Albright property, which is the 40 acres that's encircled entirely by development in Carney. It's well-known on the map. At their April the 12th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval subject to a meeting, all of, or meeting all of the staff comments. Minutes are enclosed and as well as the staff, staff report. And upon our board discussion, we would ask that you consider the proposed ordinance at five seats.
Any additional comment from staff?
Very similar to Estates of Merrimack in that it was previously approved. No changes have been proposed to the final plat, and again, engineering plans for this phase have also been approved by the city engineer.
Alderman Barber, any additional comments for planning and zoning?
The only thing that I would add is that on another plat, there is a street labeled Marguerite Street, which we had asked them to rename because it's not contiguous and it's not in line with the existing Marguerite Street. So, there's nothing on this particular one, but going forward, we will see it again. I'm assuming, and we'd want to, we want to see that name change, that street name change.
Any questions or discussion from the board on this request?
So, the total plat has, this one has 30 lots.
Yes, you're looking for the total number of lots. What is that, David?
The entire subdivision, yeah, this is phase one of a subdivision that will have 100 lots.
And these are normal-sized lots?
They are more than 75 by 110 feet deep, which is our minimum size requirement.
Right.
Most of the lots are about 120 feet deep or so. Some get to 130 feet deep as well in future phases.
Okay.
It, it looks pretty crowded. If you look at it, if you looked at the whole subdivision on an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper, it looks really crowded, but they do meet minimum lot size requirements.
Okay. That was my concern. Looking at it on an eight and a half by 11, it's like, wait a minute, pretty crowded in there, so, thank you.
If there are any other questions or discussion from the board, if you could read the proposed ordinance for the first reading by Todd Olley, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Noah's Landing First Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
Move to approve on first reading.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading by Todd Olley, please.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Noah's Landing First Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way and easements thereon.
I make a motion to approve. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barber?
Aye.
The votes unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, I believe that concludes our public request and petitions. We'll move on to the scheduled public hearing this evening.
Mr. Mayor, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider an application from Jerry Siler, representing GJN Development, to amend the meadows at Greenfield, the planned district that is for the remaining stages of meadows at Greenfield. After a similar public hearing held on April the 12th, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request subject to staff comments. Those minutes are enclosed along with the flat report. The fire district recommended that the Foxtail Drive connection to Prairie Drive be included in Phase 7 for better emergency access. The developer indicated an inability to get additional financing to include the road connection as part of Phase 7. Any additional comments from the development director and board liaison Kathy Barber? After those comments will be made, we recommend that the floor be open for comment.
Any additional comments from David Pavlich?
I think the staff report lists some of the proposed changes in these last three phases. The key, as Jim had mentioned, was moving the connection for the Foxtail Drive back around to Prairie Creek Drive, and then the connection to 33 Highway from the seventh phase into the eighth phase. And then there were some other, other proposed changes as well. Some lots were moved, but the number of lots remains the same, and there's some setback, a request for reduced setbacks along the lots for the trail. If you remember, on some of our previous plats along the trail, they've dedicated additional strip that covers areas, dedicated to the city, an additional strip of ground that covers areas that we mow. We have landscaping, things like that. There were some neighbors that were at the meeting. There, I think we had maybe two or three residents that talked primarily about just traffic and timing. I think Sean Warfield was one of those, and she is in the audience tonight as she always is at your board meetings. There, none of the public comments were, we are against the proposed changes. They just wanted to be more informed of the proposed changes.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add, Alderman Barber?
I think, yes. I think some of the, some of the concerns were that they were phasing, and that they were going to do those lots that, that run along the walking trails first, and so therefore there wasn't going to be that connection. There's about 30, David, you have to, you may have to correct me, but I think there's about 35 houses in that phase, so it won't be a huge additional amount of traffic initially. And then as soon as that phase is done, they'll go into the next one that does connect. And then I, I just want to commend the city and the developers on bringing Meadow Brook Drive up where they did by the pool so that it's a, a true intersection there with Meadow Brook, that it meets up with Meadow Brook Drive across 33. We've not always been, we've not always used as a city the foresight to do that, and we have these weird little jogs through the city, and so I was very happy that, that the city and the developers worked together to make that happen.
Was there anything about a turn line?
There will be, there will be a traffic study at some point, and that, that will be on the developers to do, but I, David, again, correct me, but is that with the next phase? Not, not the seven, but is it eight?
Correct, yeah. Alderman Holt, MoDOT's comments on this proposed, proposal was that at the time Phase 8 comes through, or at least the phase where this connection to 33 Highway would be done, they'll require a traffic impact study. That traffic impact study will talk about traffic generation and what improvements would be needed to make a connection to 33 Highway. After that, then, the developer would prepare construction plans like they do for the city improvements, submit to MoDOT for review and approval, and then will need to seek a permit to actually do construction out there on the site.
So they may have to vacate Lot 42?
I'm sorry.
At a future date?
I'm sorry.
So you're saying they may have, you're saying that they may have to vacate at Lot 242 at a future date? Is that what you're saying?
Not necessarily. It depends on what those proposed improvements would be to the intersection and how much room they take in right of way.
Okay.
This time, I'll open the floor for public comment. If you are speaking for or against this proposed amended plan for Phases 7 through 9, I ask that you either move forward here in City Hall to the podium, speak your name and address for record, or if you are joining us on Zoom, we ask that you raise your hand, and you'll be acknowledged at that time. Open up the floor for public comment.
Jeff Port with Carney Fire. I think our main concern with this replat is the Fox, I believe it's Foxtail Drive that's existing there. You know, we measured that out, and I believe that street's roughly 1,000 feet, existing, just existing now. Our concern is, you know, the existing homes on Foxtail, we're going to add another 37 lots with the proposed Phase 8 there. So, I believe that'll give us, I think, close to 60, 60 residents on that street with, with only one way in. You know, I, our concern is access, being able to get in. If, if, if we have an incident there, you know, we need to be able to get vehicles anywhere else. With that only being, you know, a one way in and one way out, it would just be better for us if, if that connection to Prairie Creek would be made with this phase, and, you know, along with the police, it would give everybody better access. You know, I can't speak for, for Donnie, but I would, I would think he would, he would appreciate to, you know, that connection being made now as well for, you know, snow removal and things like that, so. You know, we, we would just appreciate the, the opportunity to maybe sit down with Jerry and see if there's something that we could, we could come up with a plan to where that, that connection could be, could be made sooner than later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing nobody else move, we'll close the floor for public comment or input. Board, I'll give you the opportunity to speak and share your thoughts, and we'll also allow the applicant to, just to speak here momentarily too, if they wish to do so. I'm a little concerned with our fire district having concerns with the, the proposed project, and didn't know if the board would entertain tabling the request until we have some additional time to, to work with the fire district and the applicant to maybe mitigate those concerns.
Yeah, let's just.
I, I, you know, we, we have, not to compare, the Silers have been great partners and developers in our community, and, and not to compare those, them to others, but we have seen an instance in, in another development in our community where we were promised something in a future phase, and that never happened.
That's true.
So, for, for that reason, I would entertain the board to- So, for, for that reason, I would entertain the board to, I'm asking the board to entertain a motion to table the request to allow us some additional time to, to work through these concerns.
I will make that motion to table this request until we've had a little further discussion with the safety concerns.
Do we have a second?
May, may I talk right now?
Sure.
Yeah, so I understand the concerns that you guys have, but we, we've actually taken all this in consideration as we designed this phase and explained our concerns of why we cannot connect to Highway 33 at this time, just for the financial bearing of it and everything. Meadows at Greenfield in Phase Two was pretty similar, one way in, one way out. And then we did Phase Three, which allowed you to connect, to go right back out on the main drag, two different ends, entrances and exits. So, when Jerry and I kind of put this together, we felt very confident that the fact that us along with you could actually turn in and turn out, we were not putting any burden on, you know, the police or the fire department at that time.
Yeah, Mr. Siler, I don't think the, at least it's my understanding from Mr. Ford's presentation for the fire district, it's not the connection to 33 Highway that's the major concern. It's a connection from, the connection to West Prairie Creek Drive to Phase Eight.
May I talk? What, where? Go ahead. Um, Phase One and Phase Two is 800 legal feet longer with a turnaround when those two was built. And we are shorter here, we'll put a turnaround, a temporary turnaround at Lot 208 and 207. Our distance is shorter than what was in Phase One and Two. Across Highway 33 to the east, Meadow Brook Lane is twice as long as our distance to get out, and there are only one way in and one way out on that road, unless you use a high school cut-through, which they barricade that off, and that's a private road. So we, a lot shorter distance than Meadow Brook Lane to the east, and we shorter than Phase One and Two that was approved and everything. So I, they need a turnaround, a temporary turnaround with fire trucks. Not, not against putting that in, because they came back out. But on Phase Four, you guys did not make me even put in a temporary turnaround. But this one need a temporary turnaround for the fire department. It won't go through, financial-wise, if I have to put the road in. I, I got storm retention that the road will block, the road is building up taller, and we can't get the water out, and it'll cause flooding back up into, by the pool, because there's got to be storm retention and everything put in if that road builds up and that road goes in. We just made a dam.
Yeah, and, and Jerry and I, on the behalf of GJN Development, we, we like to say we're a good ally with the city to try to accommodate any needs and really think outside the box to make sure this goes smooth on every phase that we develop. So, and we thought we're continuing to do this as we're presenting this next phase, or even the master plan of rezoning the next three phases.
Thanks for your input. We have a first on the floor, do we have a second? We do not have a second, so that motion dies. Mr. Administrator, if you could read the proposed ordinance, by Todd Ollie, please.
An ordinance amending the Greenfield amended preliminary plat located in Plant P Zoning District for Meadows at Greenfield Phases Seven through Nine.
Make a motion to approve?
No, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
All right, we have three ayes in one day. Second reading by Todd Ollie, please.
An ordinance amending the Greenfield amended preliminary plat located in Plant P Zoning District for Meadows at Greenfield Phases Seven through Nine.
Make a motion to approve on second reading?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pull the board.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote is three to one in favor of passing of the ordinance.
Uh, I will say that, uh, I, it is disappointing that, I feel that we didn't stand a little better with our community partner, the fire district. And, um, with that being said, the board made their decision, and it passes. We'll move on to old business. We have no old business. We have no new business to discuss. We'll go into Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
Just want to say congratulations to Dan and Kathy.
Thank you.
Alderman Holt?
No, I'm good.
Alderman Lehman?
Uh, just second what Jared, Alderman Spencer said earlier, congratulations to Dan and Kathy, and look forward to working with you, so.
And Alderman Barker?
I have nothing.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.
Cheers.